This is the air. And I had to reconcile where it was coming from. Wait.
Hello, Ms. Mary. How are you?
Good.
Good.
How are you all?
Good.
All right. Where are you sitting Tiffany?
I'm going to go to make dinner in here. She hangs in the quarters.
Hi. Do you have opponents proponents today?
No.
Oh, okay. Do you have anybody here but Anna? Might be in charge today and.
Yeah, that means we don't have a meeting. Should this have been October twenty two? The kickoff?
Okay.
Well, it just seemed that was. So they're going to the June City Council meeting as well. That's great.
We're going to see if there's scope to bring them back to you guys with draft one.
How's the passage of eleven eighty one going to impact the city? It's the Climate Action Plan. The state legislature just passed. Oh, no.
Yeah, just show up. I just changed out chairs because that was crazy. It wouldn't do that for me.
Well.
It's only.
I'll be the stand serious.
Operator.
It's a limited swivel.
Yeah, and no, I don't think that's the case. Limited swivel. I felt like I was sitting in a chair.
Yeah, there were one of them used to be really janky in here. You don't want us.
No, we're done.
We're showing the remote. Maybe. Right, that's slim. Slim margin there. No wonder you were so persistent calling.
We're having our movie this weekend, The Community Resiliency Program's Extinction, The Facts, at ten thirty on Saturday. You'll have to get up.
Oh, I'm ten thirty, midday.
It's at the library.
I'm off the door at six forty five on Saturday.
Well, it's at the library. You'll be in person and then we'll have a little discussion about it as part of our community resiliency programs. So and we have preservation canning in June, introduction to fermentation in September. But that first extinction, the fact is with Richard Attenborough. And then our next one is Uma, A Water Crisis in Bolivia, and then Battle Over Bear's Ears National Monument. And then twenty forty. If we live to see the day. Oh, and there's a good talk Eagle Creek Fire. Will it reburn Tuesday, May nine? At seven, six to seven thirty, Daryl Ward, who worked with the USFS as a fire researcher will give that talk. It's that Scaminia County Reads. And that. Then they have the fundamentals of Firewise on Thursday, May eighteenth. And then the author Brian Freeze or Fees Vice will speak at the Hegelwald on the twenty fifth. There's some good stuff through our library.
What was the canning when you talked about?
Canning and preservation is June twenty fourth, eleven to two.
How did the seed exchange go?
Good. We had about fifty people and lots of lots of good seeds and plants and all the plants went home.
Okay.
Awesome. Yes, that that always makes me feel happy. I hate to because I'm the one who has to take them home. And find a home for them. No, we had we had a lot of good stuff and the master gardener's got to work out. That's for true. They they had a lot of questions being asked. Sally Munoz said that they had a better. A better. Interaction and outreach with the with folks here than they had in a four hour event over in the river. So.
Lot bigger city.
That's because they already know everything.
That's true.
That is true.
They don't need.
Or they think they do.
But introduction to fermentation will be with Sandra Katz and he's a very well known author about fermentation.
Awesome.
It's going to be Zoom because he's in Tennessee, but he's doing it pro bono for us. So that's always good. Oh, look at this. I hope that man's microphone works better than it did last time.
Oh, well, I have a headset today, so hopefully it does.
You did hear that. That was a.
Well, I got the feedback, so yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I configured my headset. It didn't use to work where he, yeah, I could get Zoom calls to work.
So. You know, I don't think. I don't think Zoom has figured out captioning yet.
Oh, really?
That would be nice.
Yeah, I remember having that feedback too, and I I mean, I'm looking around at options.
Dragon speak.
Yeah, right.
Isn't that still around?
We could go back.
Maybe.
Oh, there you go. So it's on the host side. And I can. Yeah, I'll wait to share my screen until I'm. Told to do so.
For the rest of them.
Traveling and unavailable. Very risk. Living life.
Yeah.
Aren't we all though?
Some of us more than others, I guess. Well, people are just going, starting to go places. It's nice weather and.
Weather's good. As they were asking about our. Our usual training and exercise and it happens to fall on Memorial Day weekend. Who's going to be around? And everybody's like, well, I'm going to be off rafting and I'm going to be doing this. It's like. Been on the schedule for almost a year.
Oh, no.
And now we're just starting to realize that.
Nobody's gonna be there.
Yeah.
Huh.
Oh, well.
Well, most holidays are a non event for things.
I have to put them in my calendar. They don't bother. You can do it good if I know what I'm doing at the end of the week. Next week's kind of like. Thank you on that. My month, a good one.
Well, if David doesn't come in, can you still get the report and record it?
Yeah. Yeah, we can't take action. Can't even approve minutes. Can't even approve minutes, but we can get a report and we consult on on this and come back out at next month. Let's go ahead and start and we'll get a report and if it shows up and we can. I sure am then. We can go ahead and open the meeting, right? We don't need a. I don't know how that works. We definitely don't have a quorum. I think we can we can acknowledge that we're gay. Well. I will, as the acting chairperson, call the meeting to order on Monday, May eighth. At after six o'clock due to the absence of some of the other members. We do not have a forum, but we do have some items that we can take on. There's any public comment. That is not already on the agenda. If you'd like to.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, Mary Repar Stevenson. I would urge the planning commission to, I know you're working on annexation procedures. The county is going through something right now, which has created a lot of angst and other things. About the comp plan and sub area plans, which you don't have. You just have a comp plan. But there's been so much misunderstanding about how the procedure works that I I think even in our community, as small as it is, we probably should have the procedure down. And I I'm not sure if we do. You know, most, most of us understand that if you have a comp plan, you can ask for an amendment once every year or however you do it by petition. The county went back asswards and approved the zone for something that wasn't in the comp plan. And yeah, and that's just it created a lot of problems in the community in the sense that people are upset. So I don't know how our, I thought our procedure in the city worked pretty smooth. You ask for a plan amendment, it goes, well, theirs goes to the hearings examiner. I think ours goes to the planning commission and then goes to the city council. And it's a flow and all procedures that involve the public should have a flow. And and be understandable to all members of the public. And they should be transparent and there should be accountability too. So just kind of heads up, just in case we ever get something like that. Because like I said, it's really been interesting in this last few weeks dealing with what they're doing. And the other thing is, I still would urge you all to put climate change on your action, in your action plan. Because I do believe eleven eighty one, a House bill eleven eighty one, I'm not sure what the Senate bill is, fifty five something or fifty two. The pass, the governor, I believe, has signed it. And if it gets funded by June, then it'll be law and it will affect our communities. And there'll be money available for climate change. Projects. So, you know, we're going to be impacted tomorrow. The George Commission meets. I don't know if you all have ever gone to it. I go quite regularly. And vital sign indicators will be a part of the discussion. And that is part of the Climate Action Plan that the George Commission approved a month or two ago. So again, I I think we really need to start looking at it in the city and see what impacts we're already feeling now. And we will feel in the future. Thank you.
All right. We will, yes, if any member of the public wants to comment on something that's on the agenda. Online, they could raise their hand at this time too, and we'll watch for those. Correct. Yes, what is it? Star?
First six.
Yes. Yeah, everyone. If there is anyone out there that would like to. As a public comment at this time. Doesn't appear. So before go the. Minutes, since we still do not have a forum. Is the report new business or is it old? Well, it's. We should be able to receive that. So once again, we've got Alex Capron here from Watershed Company. They are the consultant group that's helping us develop the shoreline, integrated shoreline, public access and trail plan. Alex presented planning commission in April in advance of the design charrette that we had. And he's here to summarize that and he has prepared for the draft report next month and. Draft draft plan. So Alex, I'll turn it over to you, I believe, of enabled sharing. Let me know if you have any problems with that.
Excellent. Thanks very much, Ben. Yeah, again, Alex keeping with the DCG watershed. Before I start sharing my screen, I'll just kind of walk through what I'm going to. Talk about tonight. So I will outline the nine projects that those of those of you that have or had attended the April nineteenth charrette in in the library. Probably got a chance to look at those, but those who have not, I will get everyone up to speed on how those projects were selected. And then I'll walk through some of the charrette results and look at the this project schedule and how our. Our report will look as we as we move to the, yeah, nearing the end of this project here come come June thirtieth. So I'll share my screen here.
You add a new word to my vocabulary, charrette. I had to look it up.
Yeah, right. And I've I've done trainings and I've studied it. But April nineteenth was my very first putting in practice. Fortunately, Marina has done a few charrettes. So she was most instrumental. And so Marina French, who will actually attend Planning Commission's next meeting in June. Yeah, she is our senior landscape architect. Yeah, big, big time collaborator on this project. So hopefully everyone can see my screen here. This is kind of the the overarching project look. And we've organized this kind of geographically. Project one being an online resource and I'll walk through each of these projects. So two, three and four are lined along the waterfront. Five, six, seven follow the Rock Creek Corridor in and around shoreline jurisdiction. And then projects eight and nine are lined up around Rock Cove. So project one, so the idea here is to invest in an online presence to make shoreline parks, trails, other recreational amenities more accessible to the public. And so those are visitors, residents. And really, the idea with this, it's, it's, you know, it could, it's pretty free flowing. It could be an ArcGIS story map that has a spatial location as well as a story in the background of parks and amenities. And then, you know, once this online presence is developed, having a way to places and strategic spots around around the city. So, you know, kind of your entry points along the waterfront, at the museum site, you know, public property where this information can be really helpful to the public and visitors. So this is, yeah, more of a concept than a hard physical project, but definitely something that isn't going to take a big lift in terms of resources. And there are, of course, existing resources, existing resources there now with the city reference points on on park properties. So project two, and so I'll kind of go back and forth between the overview map as well as the zoom in projects. And I I guess I I jumped ahead a little bit. So we, as part of the open house and leading up to the charrette, did a couple of things. So we we gathered a bunch of public input as part of the open house. And we also did a a more in-depth GIS analysis. So this looked at. Existing property, if it's public or private, and then what level of public it is. Environmental constraints information. So that's environmental resources along the shoreline, steep slopes, FEMA floodplain areas, wetlands, those types of things, as well as networks. So that's your sidewalks, your trails, absence of those features. And we looked at kind of inverse areas where maybe there's a gap. Maybe that's actually a really good opportunity. So not just looking at the gap itself, but the gap is a potential opportunity. So we did an assignment and this is still something that we are in process of refining as we close to the end of this project. But at the date of the charrette, we had a raster analysis score, you know, zero is a white area. You can see the steep slopes really pop out as well as private properties to a lesser extent, up to a high score of nineteen. So the darker the property underneath this base map, the more desirable it is to do a development. And I'll, yeah, I'll touch on this a little more throughout the presentation. So project two, which is going to be this location here. This is essentially getting a connection to improve pedestrian amenities along southwest Rock Creek Drive. And so the idea here is that there's some great amenities in the Mill Pond Trail, a great connection. But there is kind of a missing link to degree between the waterfront downtown area to the shoreline. So the idea with this project, and there's a couple of project types that were brought up. You've got three different project potentials. One is kind of a low hanging fruit approach where you are moving from the existing public property, this plaza park, to Mill Pond Trail using wayfinding signs. And this aligns with a couple of different ideas that have already been proposed. This isn't a new idea. So both the twenty twelve wayfinding master plan as well as the pedestrian and bicycle links plan in nineteen ninety one speak to having a connection between Rock Cove and downtown and to an extension, the waterfront. And so these master plan documents speak to improving that pedestrian and recreational experience. So you'll note in the planning commission memo, we had a few different exercises and I'll speak to those in a little bit. But members of the public were able to weigh in on these alternatives here. And yeah, I can, I can speak to those results in a little bit. And then so project three. So this was again kind of a pedestrian amenity type project. This is located. Right, kind of on the cusp between Rock Cove and the Columbia River. So this is a kind of a a single developer owning both. Both areas at the intersection of Southwest First Street and Southwest Seymour as well as between BNSF Railway and Southwest First Street. So it's a pretty big, pretty large project area. And from a long range stand, planning standpoint, the city's downtown plan talks, talks about this as a key project, kind of a. A guess, Ben, what what is the word here? Kind of a Kickstarter catalyst. Thank you. My mind's drowned a blank. So catalyst project. And we looked at the different alternatives that the developer had presented to Planning Commission in October twenty nineteen. And and really, you know, looked at this project in particular and and looked at it in a couple of different ways. So one, obviously, the shoreline public access being a key component, creating connections, creating continuous shoreline public access. Not not just in the near term, but potentially in the long term, you know, way out in terms of, oh, well, could we do a bridge over the railway? Does that make sense? Well, let's show the connection now and maybe twenty years down the road, maybe that does make sense and the city's in a different spot. But also, this particular plan looks, looks at and meets the comprehensive plan, transportation and circulation goal, which is to. Develop a plan that's safe and convenient or so, develop safe and convenient alternative forms of transportation such as bikeways, walkways and pathways. So that this easement here could capture that, that idea as well as the Rock Creek Drive connection point. That could, you know, maybe that's a pedestrian only connection that is, that is a focus there. And maybe that's the way the city can help encourage the developer to move in that direction. And what's unique about this project as as it's one of two projects within the city where the developer is actually interested in engaging and at least looking at what what it would take from an appraisal standpoint for the city to do an early purchase, you know, essentially set up a. A partnership, a public private partnership where the city could go out and apply for an RCO grant to purchase, do a basically a partial take capturing this this public access along the border of the of the shoreline as well as connecting to Rock Cove. And then that could then turn into a potential seed money to help that development project get started. So that would be kind of an idea that, hey, this is a potentially a preferred concept per this plan. Yeah, we're going to, you know, look at this a bit closer with the appraiser engaged. So the appraiser part of this project, we have an appraisal, appraisal sub or appraisal company that is a sub. And they are looking to get this as one of the two projects on their schedule to go out and appraise this multi parcel site from that frame. Okay, so the third waterfront project, again, this is making a connection from Upland Residential. Okay, so the third waterfront project, again, this is making a connection from upland residential areas to the waterfront. So for folks that have walked along the waterfront, it does eventually stop. There isn't a trail and folks can proceed, yeah, somewhat at their own risk, up this gravel drive. And they can either, you know, make an attempt to make a connection up to First Street. There's an existing informal trail there that connects to First Street, but you kind of gotta hop a guard rail to get there. So there's definitely some limitations. There are some crosswalks, but you've got, you know, you have some, some constraints. So the idea with this project is that, one, it would be in part, potentially an environmental enhancement project with Kanaka Creek being a, a, a fish bearing stream. So there is a potential there for some, some site restoration and then also potentially pedestrian amenities. So you've got some lower hanging fruit in terms of providing some road signage, just to make it clear that this is a multi-use thoroughfare. As well as paving this trail, which connects to an existing project that's in the works, which is the first street sidewalk connection. So the idea here being, well, if you're creating these connections and improving this access, well, then maybe you can look more longer term at having a graded deck along the gravel drive. So you have a separated pedestrian amenity that can help improve the safety. So that's potentially something to look at. Yeah, here, if not in the midterm then, or not, not in the near term, then closer in the midterm for this type of project. And then, so we're moving on to project five. So this is the first of the Rock Creek projects. I'm going to zoom in to get a sense. So this is essentially the city site. Or the, a, a former single family residence that the city purchased. I'll go here. The, oops, let's see. So the idea to both create public access to lower, lower Rock Creek as well as provide some environmental enhancement. And so this environmental enhancement works in a couple of different ways, right? So it's already spelled out in the twenty eighteen shoreline restoration plan and a couple of different projects. The R eight and R thirteen, so one being house removal, potential shoreline softening. I'll zoom to that kind of conceptual image where you've got basically existing riprap. Kind of bare, no shoreline vegetation. I don't have the photo here, but there's a, there's a direct outfall that has a, it's a pretty big water, or sub city scale watershed that dumps directly into Rock Creek. So all the upstream catch basins and stormwater network. Or a lot of, correct me if I'm wrong, Ben, do dump out here. And that's the number four here. So untreated stormwater outfall directly into the creek. And then this dash here is kind of the informal, informal water trail. So as I mentioned in last meeting, anything water, or anything, yes, water word of the ordinary high watermark is public domain. And so in the summertime, it's safe to walk up the creek bed. That's, that's perfectly legitimate and is public property. Or, you know, as part of the public good. So that is also kind of part of this as an idea to educate the public that this is a route up to visit the first falls. So conceptually, a couple of different project ideas, one doing a low impact development, which is a green stormwater technique. This being kind of an example here. Another is, is removing this rock riprap along the shoreline. This is again, one of the few locations where it exists along Rock Creek in city limits. So that is a potential habitat improvement and that can also help with, you know, help provide future bridge project and bridge replacement. If this project were to happen, could potentially be used in tandem with that bridge replacement as a form of advanced mitigation. So that's, that is an option there. And, and just looking at the community, community support, support of this project too. This one had a lot of interest at the open house side of things where folks wanted to get access to Rock Creek. And they wanted to know how to do that and then also respecting private property rights in that, in that end. And so moving up further along Rock Creek, so project six, this is again, providing public pedestrian access along Rock Creek at the first falls location. So, and I'll show kind of the graphic here. This is where that project is located. Now looking at the project itself, from an existing standpoint, existing condition standpoint. Folks know that this is the location of the two thousand six Piper Slide. We've got existing right of way on either side. And this is the second project where you've got an interested property owner that's willing to engage with the city. And look at these different easement options from an appraisal standpoint. So that is, that is captured there as part of this project. And again, this, this project really meets the continuous public access policy of the shoreline master program. Okay, and then moving further up, this is access to Upper Rock Creek Falls. So this is again, something that was brought about as part of the open house. So this, this is a county owned property. Folks know this, this property and I will back up a little bit. So the impetus of including this project after the February open house, we did meet with a small group of stakeholders as well as the members of the steering committee for this public access and trails plan project. And we did hear from members of the community that, that live in this area and different issues that they were experiencing of folks walking through private property to get access to Upper Rock Creek Falls. So this is a project that acknowledges that, that concern from those community members. And, and looking at this project. So an important point of this project, and I'll speak a little bit more about this when we get to the shret part of our talk. This project has a few things that need to happen before it can really move forward in terms of a RCO grant funding perspective. So what we're showing here is kind of a rough trail that roughly follows the goat trail or the informal trail from Ryan Allen Road down to the waterfall. So this is something that, you know, we heard about this, not only open, not only in the open house, but in the charrette that, oh, this is kind of a locals only path. And, you know, that's, that's just kind of an informal access to see these falls. That's, that's where this, you know, this Facebook dot com photo was taken. But a few things need to happen. So one, and coordinating with the county to understand opportunities for a memorandum of understanding, a collaboration on shared use. You know, while still recognizing the county's ultimate use and, and goals for this site. You know, so there is an existing maintenance facility, you know, let's say this maintenance facility expands or they build it on the, the property to the right. So, so basically to the east of their existing facility. So there's a few things that have to happen. Another thing too, is, is developing a, an annexation program because this is outside city limits. So the city currently does not have direct jurisdiction over this property. So that's, you know, a few things that would have to take place, either a memorandum of, of understanding or, or that annexation before this project could really move forward in earnest.
Let me interrupt you?
Yes.
So if we're talking about an annexation, how much of it are we talking about? Because that, the landslide goes up to, I think it's Chester?
From just behind Chester, yeah, it's real close to the properties.
So do we wanna, I mean, how? How far do we want to go with?
Yeah. Valid questions.
Please continue.
Yeah. Right, well, and yeah, and I'll speak to the results side of the, of the charrette. Yeah, and the two exercises there. So moving on to the Rock Cove projects that were brought forward to the charrette part of this meeting. Project eight, so this is a, a, a private property along Rock, Rock Cove that was originally owned by the county. So there are existing easements there that are in place. With the understanding that this property would eventually be developed by a, by a private entity. So a couple of different ideas. One is to bring the public closer to, so this is kind of your existing conditions. Here's kind of some enhancement options. So one is getting the public closer to the shoreline, providing, you know, direct, either visual or actual physical public access utilizing this property. So getting something as an agreement there as part of a development application. Another, similar to the project for the Kanaka Creek project along the waterfront, Foster Creek is a fish bearing stream. The city has, I believe, yeah, restoration plan, project R six. There's a Foster Creek culvert replacement project to upsize that culvert. Also, you know, looking at this project, the Portis County County did a fatal flaw analysis, looking at watercraft recreation sites and recognize this area as potentially having a water access. However, when you look at the site, it does have a bit of high bank. I will, I'll kind of zoom quickly back to the, this kind of compilation map. You can look and see here in terms of water access points, it would be more difficult. While it was something that was brought up as part of the open house, more site visits, you know, not to say that it's impossible, but it would be a little more difficult to do and constrained in where it could happen. The white being basically steep slopes, because steep slopes is a constraint here in the GIS analysis. So you can kind of see the hints there that it, it is a more of a high bank type site. Okay, and then looking finally at project ten. So this was basically idea to have a partnership between the city, oops, between the city and the Columbia Gorge Interpretive Center. So, yeah, and we didn't develop any, any formal concepts. The idea of utilizing a lot of publicly available and free parking really resonated with folks as well as going back and I can show, I'll, I'll show the overall site here. This is a very large parcel. The, the site that the museum manages is this entire parcel and all of these islands within Rock Cove. So there's a great opportunity for a, a water trail and, oops, and potentially, you know, if it's not a boat launch, potentially a floating, a floating dock where folks could tie up seasonally and, and could access the museum or conversely, use the museum as a starting point where they go off and, yeah, and, and go somewhere else. So with that, you know, for those who have looked at the memo and let me see if I can, I'll see if I can share, I'm gonna see if I can share my screen for photos. So it looks like can kind of zoom through some of the exercises. So in, in your packet, you'll notice two different exercises that we did as part of the charrette. I'm going to go ahead and share again so that folks can see some of the photos that we were able to take. So, yeah, again, the shirt was well attended. I think there were a few less than the open house, but the folks that attended were really well engaged. And I feel like we got some great feedback from the two different types of exercises as well as written feedback from these exercises. So the first being a, a, a money exercise where every participant was given five thousand dollars. So five one thousand dollar bills to pay into these nine different projects. And that allowed a few projects to really bubble to the top and understand, well, what is the community really wanting? And I know this isn't a full sample of the community, but, you know, far from it. But it's, it's a, a robust enough attendance of folks, some of which are new. That was their first public meeting and some of which, this was their second public meeting. So, you know, we were able to have folks pay into each of these projects and we got the projects that kind of floated to the top. Now, within these projects, we also had the DOT exercise, which allowed folks to look at different projects from a lens of, well, how, how do I want to see a different project look? And then we, you know, looking at project two, there is a lot of interest in just having a sidewalk along the south side of Southwest Rock Creek Drive. And that, hey, instead of a more, more in-depth project that's going to cost more money if the desire isn't there, but just to, you're going to have twice the amount of pedestrian thoroughfares. And let's say it's folks that are walking from the waterfront, walking around, they can continue along and not have to cross the side, cross the streets twice, because they're, they don't want to walk on a shoulder where there's a parking lane. So we found just, just in that feedback there that this is the preferred option of the three. Not to say that these aren't options and definitely not the wayfinding sign, because I think both options A and B could be considered. And will be considered because, yeah, as you saw as well in the memo, the five projects that bubbled to the top in terms of a community preference or community interest were projects and I'll, I'll go back. Oh, let's see here if I've got a photo of it. All right, so if we're looking here, yeah, it was, it was projects two, three and four, project seven and project nine. And when I say these projects are, are preferred by the public, that doesn't mean that the other projects are not going to move forward. And in fact, all these projects are going to have a next step. And what is the next step for this project? And, and really, you know, quite frankly, one of the projects that didn't move forward, project five really has as much or more than some of these projects in terms of potential funding streams and potential availability to, to move forward in terms of satisfying a number of environmental and infrastructure interests that align with the city comprehensive plan and the shoreline master program restoration plan. So while this is a public access and trails plan and that project five may not seem as, as attractive to the public in doing that, that is still a project that we will evaluate and, and provide some high level cost considerations for. And, yeah, I have taken up quite a bit of your time. So I do want to open it up for questions and I, I do want to make this kind of collaborative too. I, I, yeah, I do want to say that as we get to the conclusion of this project and you look at the draft plan here in June, there's, there's a lot of work that we will be doing to cost out kind of the prefer, some of the preferred plans. Yeah, like as I mentioned, project seven has a few steps that have to happen before a true design, you know, pre-design level costs can be established for RCO grant funding. So the idea with this report is that we have several projects that we can move forward with in the, I, I say we, that the city can move forward with as part of the twenty twenty-four RCO grant cycle for an application. So I think, I think that is it. I can, I can speak to some of, some of the outside of the box comments that we did receive. And I thought this was really helpful too. One of the members wanted to dedicate all of their allotted money. Um, one of the members uh wanted to to dedicate all of their allotted money. To um aquatic invasive uh weed removal, so essentially the mill foil that's in Rock Cove. Yeah, so I I and I thought that was, I thought that was a great comment to to include and it's part of the record. And um, we're gonna include in the matrix, it's gonna just be another matrix entry. Um, and then I I also do want to mention that prior to the charrette, we did meet with the county. And I I think that was in the planning commission memo and that we have an understanding that they are moving forward with with some ideas in terms of projects. They're doing some invasive weed or invasive plant removal along the shoreline. As well as um potentially putting in a boat launch or formalizing a boat launch. Cause there is some informal access that's going on there and that would be a a non-motorized launch, I want to make that part clear. So, um, I I think, I think that is it. Unless if there's, yeah, if anyone has questions.
Well, you're gonna have problems with that access right there by the county buildings off of uh Rock Vancouver Avenue. Where the old houses. Um, because there was some residences back there and then the county buildings. And I'm I'm fairly sure they don't want weekend visitors parking all along that dead end road. Uh, there, I'm not sure how that would work out.
Yeah, and it may be, yeah, and I appreciate the comment there, Mary.
Well, the city has condemned it, so, I mean, we could potentially use it as a parking lot. But if Mary's concerns are right, I don't, I don't know the two people who live above it. But um, they may have an objection.
Well, they'll, that, oh, Brian uh. Brian bought the big house where Richard uh lived. And then there's one next door and then another one and then the uh condemned house. So, even if you remove that condemned house, you're not gonna have a big parking lot. And that is a very small lane, actually, I don't think you can even park on the side. It's just a two-lane lane uh there. Uh, I'm I'm just, you know, everybody says they want to walk, but I don't see a lot of my fellow citizens walking all the time. Uh, I I think what you will find is that it's mostly visitors who want to do stuff. And uh, those of us who live here uh aren't visitors. So, we don't walk, walk in our town unless we're walking the dog or going to the gardens or something. We're not walking to walk in in a sense.
Well, I do, I I live across from the, you know, the track at high school and I go for.
Yeah, but a lot of uh visitors are going to be using these properties or trying to use them. And you can bet that there's going to be interaction with the people who already live there close by. Especially in that lane right there. I see a lot of problems with that project.
Well, I mean, it can't be any worse than looking at the public works department, you know, town below it.
Doesn't matter, the public works is there. Uh, I'm thinking of those people, they they want access to their property, they come and go. And uh, it's gonna be like across the river where you have uh uh waterfalls and everybody parks along your road. And then try to get to your own property. It might be, it might work, who knows, but I seriously doubt it.
I don't want to dismiss your premise, so, um, you know, just, I just want to keep that in mind.
Yeah, no, they're all good projects, it's just. And I I think you have to take into account the people who already live here and how they're going to be impacted by a lot of this.
Yeah, and I I do think, you know, project five is. Pretty unique in that it would be environmental restoration first. And I don't know that you would have much more than a parklet, yeah, I don't think any amount of parking is feasible on that site. So, it it really turns into something that, well, maybe, maybe that neighborhood gets the benefit from it. But it is, you know, you're improving the stormwater outfall, you're providing an educational sign describing access up the creek. In terms of, you know, foot trail and and where that might happen. But, yeah, it's it's pretty limited in terms of actual uh visitor amenities, space.
Yeah, a nice little park wouldn't hurt, you know, there, but uh maybe with a few picnic tables or something. But uh, going down that uh, that bank is pretty dangerous on that side, by the house side. And it's eroding as we speak, I I think that's why that riprap is all over the place there.
Right.
So, everybody kind of knows where I am on this. I think this would be a long-term project that would not only service the residents of Stevenson. I'd walk down there, uh, but it would also bring in the money from people who visit Stevenson. Uh, because, you know, I guess the falls are like really popular. So, uh, but when I've looked over that property, part of it's easy. Uh, and I say this because I've built trails, I've built the parts of the Appalachian Trail and the Pacific Crest Trail. Part of it is easy. And that is the low hanging fruit that Scott, the mayor, would like to see done. But like Mary says, once you get down to the bottom where that uh, where Rock Creek crosses. That's, that's gonna be difficult, that's gonna increase the cost of it, so it's not low hanging fruit anymore. But, I think it might be a really good investment, and you have it listed like this, what, twenty-one thousand dollars? Uh, which is kind of a big chunk of change for, you know, town like Stevenson.
That's the summary, so people at the shirt were given five grand to spend.
Oh, yeah, yes, sorry.
That's the the summary of what people spent, they prioritize that.
We had thousand dollar bills to put in, they got.
Yeah, it.
Yeah, and I apologize not being at the shred, I was out of town, so, yeah, I would like to have been there.
So, it came in number one because of the amount of bills we're putting them box for that project.
So, I'm not the only one who thinks that's not a bad idea, right?
How large is the lot with the home that's condemned?
Well, so project seven came in at the highest with twenty-one thousand and that's, that's the county land, so. Sorry, re- repeat your question again.
How large is the lot with the home that the city purchased?
You know, I don't have the size, um.
Hard one, because most of it's under the ordinary high.
Yeah.
And so that.
That's I wondered, yeah.
I've never calculated that out.
When I visited there, it was the.
That's what it looked like to me.
When I visited there, the neighbor's house was like considerably further up the hill than that house.
Even the lowest one is considerably up the hill.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, I'm I'm wondering if, you know, that would be an issue and, you know, to address Mary's concern.
Yeah, I I don't know where the boundary line is, you can look on the assessors, so, uh, website. One of the other things to consider with all these water projects is uh Waschigo River. And all the problems that are up there with people who come there to use their falls and the water. And uh, you can hear our sheriff's department complaining about how many visits they pay. Uh, to these water places where people like to play. So, you know, when you do these projects, you've got to call, do the cost benefit. And uh, will it benefit your community more just to leave it as it is? Or if you open it up, what's, what's it gonna cost you in terms of the visitation by the police? So, and EMS and other things, because people get stupid around water.
So, knowing your pension for affordable housing, I can tell you that that empty house is. The the homeless are living there, so.
What's that got to do with the price of tea?
You know, I'm just saying, it's.
It affects the community.
Yeah, and uh.
That house could have been torn down, the city owns it, they can tear it down.
They can.
Yeah.
No, I'm agreeing, the other thing that I think that we have to address is we have to fix Parker Road. We cannot leave it as is, if we're gonna use that as a public place, it's dangerous. So, I don't, I don't know how much cost that would incur. But yeah, right now, it's just, it's a problem. Plus, and and we also, we're gonna talk about the, the the plot, uh, plot, plot, plot. Uh, on a.
Uh, what's that road that comes up from the dump into uh Chester? Uh, because you can see all the cracks on it, I drove it the other day. Uh, that that landslide really affected everything all the way up to the Mormon church almost.
Yeah.
And uh, uh, so, you've got a hazard too. Uh, we could have another landslide. So, I I, yeah, I'm not shooting down your projects, all our projects are good. It's just, uh, I always say you have to know the cost benefit ratio. You know, when, when does your cost outweigh your benefits? And and you need to know those ahead of time and then if you choose to go ahead, then. You've, you've made a decision based on the facts and not your wants and feelings.
Yeah, and a big part of this report is is providing a a full justification. Not just from a community desire standpoint, but from also an analysis and methodology standpoint. Taking the existing information that we know uh on a, on a spatial component. And, yeah, and and justifying that, so. Yeah, I I know, to to speak to project six, right, there are a ton of environmental constraints. And any, any structure that's out there uh or would be proposed would be something that. Um, would take a, a serious look at, at and, you know. Engineers would need a serious look uh at the feasibility of that and we're not, we're not vetting that as part of this project. But just acknowledging that it has.
Well, if we can get people, if we can get people off of Angel Heights and provide a recreational trail for both locals and out-of-towners. Uh, you know, I can see that as a long-term investment that would pay off. Just saying. Well, I didn't mean to shut the room down.
No. Yeah, I I think that's why we're doing, doing this, to find those, find those types of projects, right? Find the ways um to provide access and transform what we have now, um, that people aren't satisfied with. And to something that people would be satisfied with. Um, I'm pleased with how the project is coming together and how uh the watershed company is approaching it too, so. They're doing a good job of maintaining these two focuses, one is this long-range focus. And of, hey, the pie in the sky, um. Eighty-year look of identifying some projects, maybe those aren't gonna happen right now. But we do have this goal of providing continuous pedestrian access and so source those. Um, don't put a lot of thought into them or effort, money into them now for something that's not gonna happen now. Um, but identify where there are gaps, identify projects to fill those gaps in a more immediate term, that that shorter term focus. Um, and um, set those projects up to get funded um relatively soon. And so, that's really good. The, this um charrette was a good one too for for seeing uh things like what Mary uh talks about. With um the mill foil on the pond, so that is a barrier to republic, who's uh the waters of Rock Cove. So, um, let's not forget about the maintenance part of it, there's another one on that board that somebody took, donated five grand to for maintaining what we have right now. Before adding to it, so, we're planners, we think about the future, we don't um engage that, those maintenance needs. But we were able to source that through this effort to be able to provide some of that um feedback and guidance to. The powers that be on the inside too, so.
Can we send them all north of the bridge up Rock Creek? The, the bridge on Red Block. Well, people are always looking for adventure, that would be an adventure, they'd have to walk along planks to cross the bridge. And then they would be in the wilderness and they could have an adventure. Have you been up there toward uh following Rock Creek all the way up?
Not yet.
Well, you should go, it's an.
Yeah, it looks pretty cool, yeah, just looking at the aerials, yeah.
I know it's not within the city limits, but, you know.
Well, and and that is another part we're not forgetting, because there's a, you know, a multi-state trail. That the city would love to make some connection to somewhere down the line. And I know, but within the cities, is it the UGA, there's, there's basically the, the. I guess the, the lake in terms of sourcing for drinking water, am I, I don't know if I'm.
Lebon.
It's.
Like Lebon.
There's a few different, I I'm not sure exactly what you're talking about.
Okay, alright.
I'd like to reiterate that uh my friends at Washington Trail Association have said that they would be interested in. In getting involved in a project like that, but it has to be a matching thing, you gotta get people in the neighborhood. And I will personally, you know, lead people to do that, I will show them how it's done. And you know, I would consider it an honor to be able to do that kind of a thing.
Cool.
So, where do we go from here?
Well, the next step is a a draft report, so, that'll be, it's part of, part of the next packet. I, I would imagine. So, and and really, so, I guess the way that, yeah, right, that's the short answer. Uh, so the way we're, and and maybe I can, let's see, I'll, I'll uh. Hold on just a second, if I can.
Are you going to prioritize these projects or kind of give us some monetary thingy? Saying, oh, this costs five million dollars, do you really want to do this?
That's exactly right, so, we're developing this plan to satisfy a few difference, um. Change the um, change the lingo, so, we're, we're spinning three different plates with this um plan. One plate is the shoreline public access and how it interacts with um project permitting and seeding the waters for. Uh, development that might come in and needs to provide shore, shoreline access, but doesn't have an idea, here are some ideas. Um, it'll also facilitate projects that want to do a specific idea related to shoreline access. County projects, board projects, so, that's all in the shoreline realm. In the um. Uh, grant realm, we're developing the plan to satisfy the criteria of the Recreation and Conservation Office. And so, as part of that, we're costing out projects and having that as part of the um capital improvement plan for shoreline access. So, these top projects that were identified as um ways to fill gaps and prioritized by the public. Uh, through this process, we'll get that um deep dive treatment, then there will be the the other list, the longest.
So, where does the co-apply property, former co-apply property fall into these plans?
Since it's outside of city limits, we left it off the scope of the pro- planning area.
But the railroad part is in, where they keep all their crap? Oh.
I wouldn't think so, city limits um goes to the center of Rock Creek. And follows the north side of the highway.
The railroad thinks they're gods, you know, they, they're like a country to themselves, so.
Well, I wondered about that property there across from Interpretive Center, because it's a, you know. But they keep all their stuff there for construction and that, but it's a pretty big piece of land, I always thought it was kind of ours.
There is an old house over there that I've been inside, uh, right across the railroad tracks. Um, I don't know what that's used for.
Okay, cause everybody wanted the co-apply property. Cause everybody wanted the co-ply property, but then the WKO or who bought it?
And so.
Yeah, cause that's a nice flat piece of property and it has water access then, but it is privately owned. Okay. Go forth and conquer.
Any other uh questions for Alex or?
Thank you, informative.
Thank you very much.
Alex, you have my number, right?
I believe through Ben, I do.
Davey Ray.
Yeah, sounds good, Davey. Oh, well, Davey, you're on you're on the steering committee.
Yeah, you can contact me anytime.
That sounds good, yeah. No, and I mean, every every one of these projects, um moving forward or not, they're all an entry in the project matrix, which is gonna be kind of a. A s. Semi standardized template that'll be used um for projects to move forward when they're ready to, if this plan is. Yeah, on a shelf and picked up in a decade. So. Great, well, thank you. Thank you for your time tonight.
And I don't know if uh you guys had a quorum here earlier, but uh.
Would you now?
You're it.
I'll approve the meeting.
You 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 became the quarrel. Well, it's uh since uh Davey's president now, let's uh jump back.
Well, I meant to be here via Zoom, but I didn't have the number, so sorry.
No problem. Let's jump back and uh if you'd like to approve. The minutes if everybody's had a chance to. Look over them from last month and then.
I did, so I motion to approve the minutes of April tenth.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor.
I.
Uh any opposed? Uh none opposed, uh we'll. Those into the record. Do we have subcommittee reports?
We're pressuring for that.
Well, it sounds like shoreline was kind of taken care of. Parking, um we have a committee, which is great. Um Ben gave me kind of, he sent me an email. He didn't realize he gave me great ideas on that email. Um parameters for meetings, so going forward, we're gonna start having parking committee meetings. And plan on doing um. The parking study in July as well, so going forward.
Is there any way you can get the Stevenson Hotel guys not to park in front of the post office on the weekend?
Hmm.
Don't they have parking in the back?
In the alleyway, maybe.
One space in that that is occupied by the um. Air ticket staff.
Hmm. And so that that part on the south side isn't theirs.
South of the.
South of the building. The alley and then the.
I think it's a separate lot.
Yeah, so it's okay. Well, it becomes problematic and during the summer especially because there's a lot of more visitors, so uh. You know, I. I take care of the flowers over there, so I'm there on Saturday watering and everything, then I see everything. People going the wrong way for one thing, especially for the dang hotel, because they want to park close so they can take their luggage out. So they come uphill instead of going all the way around and coming down.
Uh I should have been busted there for parking in the handicap place long ago.
But uh yeah, I I, you know, that that parking on weekends right there is becoming an issue.
So, yeah, we hope to identify the scope of the issues with the usage study um. This time, July usage study, last time we had a usage study, it was in September, so. Comparison differences and um be able to help us. Evaluate policies, prioritize parking improvement projects. Be on with a survey occur on a weekend or weekday or.
Oh, aren't we looking at both?
See, yeah, TBD. Last time we did it, it was a Thursday. Um they recommended a weekday. The the they, the recommendations for parking usage studies recommend capturing weekday, recommend capturing weekend. So the way we designed the last one was. One weekday, um a Thursday. Uh selected that because the counties closed on Fridays and that changes parking dynamics um. Fridays generally do when people take off work and just come out to recreate too, so. Uh less so on Thursday, so we'll aim to do a Thursday and Saturday and aim to.
I don't think the hotel was there last year.
They weren't open.
Still COVID-ish.
And so we will um be strong arming, I mean, asking uh volunteers to help us count cars.
Very.
Can't you do one of those duty keeping?
Duty keeping.
Of the.
Across the road.
Line across the road.
Oh, it's it it's a little bit different, so um the usage study, you try to capture the change in dynamics um. Over the course of the day, and so last time we had it, we had a team of volunteers going out every. Hour between noon and six, noon and five o'clock. And um. On some block faces, you just count the total number of cars, say there's fifteen spaces uh along this block and it was occupied by seven cars when we. And we checked it. On the busier ones, uh last time we did a turnover study. So each space, you noted whether there was a car there, whether it was the same car that was there the previous hour or not, so.
So you're gonna do all the roads?
Downtown um. Area, there are twenty five blocks that were identified and we did all the block faces uh in downtown areas.
Couldn't we put up game cameras? Well, I I mean, to me, it would make more sense because then you you start at five AM in the morning or and go all night and you've got. And then you just review the film.
If it was a sipping couch.
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't know what you think.
I just wish we could get people to park up first, I mean.
Yeah.
It just.
It gets safer to get out of your car on first.
They won't do it.
It's way wider. You're not that far away uh from everything and anything uh past the fire hall is empty almost.
Yeah.
Well, I I mean, I'm suggesting game cameras because they're on constantly and you can, you get the feed, you record it. And then you can go back over it and see, it's not, you know, like. Of course, you might find out stuff about your neighbors that you don't wanna find out. Uh especially at one AM in the morning, but uh uh you know, to me, it. Makes more sense than depending on people to count stuff. That way you can see the patterns.
If you depend on the game camera, then you're still depending on people to count stuff, and it's my kind of best, so having a volunteer.
And how many blocks, like twenty five blocks, yeah.
Out there doing some of that work for us.
You know, if people know you're doing that, they're kind of like, oh, big brother, yeah. So.
Well, welcome to the twenty first century.
Hey, I'm glad everything I did was before the internet.
Yeah, I don't know that sheriff's thing that they put up for the mileage. That was supposed to record traffic too. But I don't know if they ever figured out how to download that information.
We will reconsider methodology.
I'm just saying, I I would like to know a complete story.
High schooler.
Yeah.
Making a project.
Now she got schools out. A leadership team.
They need.
That's true.
Community service hours to graduate.
Yeah, with the snappers.
The right people. Um, is that the only subcommittee?
Yeah, shoreline was.
Yeah, annexation, um no update on annexation policy.
Well, we do do the the trail thing, but it's there, right?
Alright.
Well, counting us, we're up to seven.
Oh, good, nice.
I have a committee too. No, and hopefully one more that would be great asset, so fingers crossed on that one.
There, you have on your counters.
We, I believe we had thirteen the last time. And we could.
Every hour.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
Uh thoughts of the month? Thoughts of the month um have two uh links for you on part of each. I'm sorry, parking was last time. Uh upzoning, so Strong Towns organization talks about upzoning. Saying, hey, it may not be the solution, uh but you should do it anyway and remove that uh barrier. Upzoning is a term for allowing increased density. Um and then. Complete streets or um how smart growth America sees that they are not being. Uh created in a very complete way, so they're saying to really look at project by project what a complete street is and design streets for that project and so. I need to provide more background, complete street. So a complete street is accommodating all users of a street, um so you're completely addressing it. And what this organization or this article is saying is that oftentimes that just means shoehorning. Everything into one without considering how they work together. And so if you're gonna build a street for cyclists. Uh make sure that the cycling lane is not subject to a lot of um. Uh driveways and corridors and and. Things that make that cycling dangerous if you're going to serve that. Population, so. Add more project, having more focus at the project level. Uh than at the. Policy good all in.
Portland seems to have a lot of street complex like that. Copenhagen is a really good city to look at, or if you're looking for a bicycle with car and pedestrian. They're they're.
Should we do a site visit?
I've already done.
Yeah, let's take that.
Let's go.
Yeah.
You know what's more interesting is the count of, more interesting is to count all the bicycles that are in the river.
Yeah.
Because that's where they all wind up. Uh I uh am gonna go back and visit my children and grandchildren. Which means I probably won't be here for June. I don't know what the second Monday in June is. So. Just a heads up.
Magic machines. Well, there's a calendar in the dang.
It would be that that's Sunday. It's the twelfth. It's my anniversary.
Okay, I'll I'll probably do that, but in.
I see your husband come here for your anniversary.
We'll just celebrate early.
Uh the staff reports or other commission locals. Oh, and the staff report, I've got broadband, uh just continuing. Similar to last time, that project uh is continuing on to uh parallel ways. Uh that should be done by the end of June, so I should have more to report on that uh in July. Uh East Loop Road Waterline Project, uh last time you guys had trouble getting in here, this time you don't, so that's all buttoned up and and done. Uh spruce up Stevenson Day was Saturday, uh another good turnout and another good weather day for um.
That was a busy day in downtown Stevenson. It really was. It's like, whoa, soon as the weather's nice.
Can we call it Loop Road anymore? I mean, there's a big hole in it.
It's a valid question. It used to be strawberry. Road and then a strawberry loop road. And then it was just Loop Road. To go back.
So are you calling the other Loop East? Or you're calling this East?
The loop on the west side would be Wesley Road.
Okay, yeah, we wanna make sure because when we had a fire at the house, they went to West Loop and.
Oh, that's not good.
That wasn't good. They showed up ten minutes later. Yeah.
City Council, sorry, had had strategic planning session um a couple of weeks ago evaluating how their current. Uh one was working out for them. They thought it was working out pretty well and wanted to continue course with that, so no. No major um. Change in directive uh from the council. End of report.
Any other issues, topics, complaints? Notes, concerns?
So is there, is the climate change in the street strat plan?
City councils, no. Sounds like you need to go to the city council. Put a bug in there.
No, I thought I talked to them about that, but I think I only, I I. Didn't talk about climate change.
Sometimes it's good.
Yeah, it's like the Chinese water.
Your memories, they tend to forget things.
If you say it enough time, they will give. You know, wear them down.
Alright, well, if there's nothing else, I would uh. Inquire if there's a motion for a term. I will motion.
Second it.
Does anybody want these flyers for the upcoming events?
I'm gonna take your, their canning, preservation one.
Yeah, it.
I don't have a grandma.
Yes, she she's.
I'll go with you.
You go with me? She's going all the, she's coming all the way from Benton County from the Washington Extension. Right, and she's bringing all her equipment and everything, so. I think that'll be fun, but uh it'll be at the library and the flyers are at the library too, and this is the Skamania County Reads. The book is uh A Fire Story by this uh Brian Fies. And that, those are pretty good discussions too.
Thank you, Mary.
During it, yes, okay.
I guess, good job.